We're going to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda?
Motion, second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are just about to start public comment. As a reminder to everyone, this is an opportunity for district stakeholders to speak about issues that affect Chatham Central Schools. We aim to keep this under 20 minutes total with up to three minutes per speaker. We don't have any public in the room, so if anyone that's online wants to speak, there's a little button where you can digitally raise your hand. If not, or if you're not, if you want to wait for the second public comment, there will be a second opportunity at the conclusion of the meeting. Do you have anyone?
Yes. Sandy Fisher.
Okay.
I didn't actually know I raised my hand. I was just trying to turn the volume up so I could hear you guys. I don't know, can you guys hear me? I don't know if you guys can hear me. I can't hear any of it.
You can hear you, Sandy.
Oh, there we go. Okay, great. I didn't actually mean to raise my hand. I was just turning the volume up because I'm sitting in the hallway again with a girls' basketball game, so come visit. But I did want to say I took the project-based science kids up to the Via Aquarium today, and it was a great time. The kids were so excited to do something, you know, outside of the school. The project-based kids wrote a grant with the Chatham Education Foundation to build a saltwater aquarium in my room, so we were able to get some inspiration from the tanks up there, and then they were able to talk with the biology manager who takes care of all of the tanks, and she gave them a lot of tips and tricks, and she's gonna resource with us when we start setting up our tank and is gonna put us in touch with a teacher at Berlin who does marine science class and has a lot of tanks there as well. So the kids were really excited to see this project starting to come together. So it was fun, and I think we can all use some fun stories these days. So that's it.
Thanks, Sandy. Do we have a... And by the way, really exciting to hear about field trips, so. Any other digital hands? No? Okay. So we're gonna move on into board member comment, and I'm gonna take the first comment to acknowledge that I think everyone listening or here in the room knows that Greg was elected supervisor of Gant, and I know he's looking forward to that new challenge. That does mean he will not be able to keep his seat here on the school board. So this morning, we received his formal resignation effective the end of the calendar year. So we will talk a little bit more about that, particularly for anyone who hasn't been through an appointment yet. We have to discuss timeline for fulfilling that seat, and there's a few options, and we will do that at the first meeting in January. So I guess I'd like to follow up that and on personal note, say, Craig, thank you so much. I personally have really appreciated the leadership and the example you set here, and I think the culture here on the board is something that I know you had a large impact on, and I really appreciate that as well. So really, thanks for your time, and we'll try to find more stuff to keep you engaged.
Thanks a lot, Matt. That was kind. It's been a great 10 years. I filled a spot for Jim Carton, and he had to resign for just moving reasons, and really glad that I took that opportunity and had some really great support along the way. You know, I'm gonna miss it. I'm gonna tell you guys, I've been here all my life. You can probably still, Bill, find me down at the robotics room. I'm gonna try to get that kicked off again if we're able to, so that's really important to a lot of these kids that are into that kind of thing. And before COVID, we were really rolling. We were really a school that other schools were waiting to see what we were coming out with, so I'm looking forward to trying to bring that back up. So thanks, everybody.
Anyone else have comment?
Go ahead, Beth. Craig, first of all, I would truly like to thank you for your years of service and enjoyed working with you over the years. I also... Is this the time that we should be discussing the agenda item or wait till then?
In terms of filling the vacancy?
No. Before...
Are you talking about an item on this agenda?
Yes.
No, we'll talk about it when we get to that agenda item.
Alright.
Craig, I just wanted to acknowledge, I mean, you know, I'm a newbie here, but I met you several years ago, and we've crossed paths, and you've talked about the board. And from day one, you know, I could see the excitement in you when you talked about the school and the board, and I can see it still, and that's obviously not gonna go away. So I'm sure the school would be very happy to hear that you continue your efforts and what you can do for the school going forward, and I think we really appreciate that involvement.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, the student representative report from Mia Port.
Hi, all. Yep, we're good. Okay. So first, I don't know if y'all noticed when you walked in, but there are so many nice holiday decorations or like winter themes on the doors, and all of us students love that. We think it's so jolly, and it just lightens the mood, you know, since we're all kind of a little bit stressed and stuff. So it's really nice to see all the holiday doors, and we really enjoy that. Next up is student government just finished a fundraiser from Krispy Kreme, and we raised $1,112. So that's awesome. We also have a lot of interest in community service projects. For example, we're gonna try and get something in the works for a blood drive and a version of a St. Baldry's Run coming up in the spring so we can give back to our community. And wrapping up this year, us seniors are going forward with our senior expos. So those are gonna be awesome this year. I'm really excited to see what my fellow peers have put together. Field trips, you mentioned, keep having them. I just had an awesome one with my management and leadership class with Mr. Loomis, and we went to Sunoco Crelin, and that was really fun to just take our learning somewhere else outside of the classroom and actually see what we're learning about in action. So yeah, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
What was the fundraiser drive for?
It was just for student government as a whole, like, so basically, we're trying to get funds just to maybe like buy a tree or something, you know, like, just for the student government funds, yeah. Excuse me?
How did you raise it?
We basically sold Krispy Kreme doughnuts. So Krispy Kreme does a fundraiser, and we collaborate with them. Yeah.
A lot.
I know. We had a lot, yeah.
I can't help but look at Mike Chuddy to see how many doughnuts he got.
Okay. Thank you, Mia. I'm particularly interested in hearing about those expos, but I'll wait till there's... We'll get a little further into the year, because...
Yeah, there are gonna be some really awesome topics this year.
Board committee reports, policy, Pat?
Update from Sal.
Oh, updates from Sal, I'm sorry. Next on the agenda is the update from Dr. D'Angelo.
So first of all, just a quick also thank you to Craig. Craig was one of the OGs, original board members who hired me, so there's only a few left on the board. So it's been a pleasure. Craig served as president twice while I've been here, and I owe a lot of our success and as a new superintendent, working with Craig, so thank you, Craig. Now with the Krispy Kreme doughnut sale, I'm gonna have to add a cholesterol clause to Mike's contract, but other than that. So a couple things, again, in no particular order. We had some awesome concerts over the last few weeks, the winter concert, not only here at the high school, of the high school band and orchestra, but also the middle school students last week. Universally, everyone was just so excited. They kind of had something that seemed to be a little bit more normal, and even though the crowd was socially distanced and masked and the students demonstrated good COVID protocols, I think it was overall a huge success. So thank you to the music department and the music teachers, particularly the middle school, which I didn't personally have a chance to see but had great reports on. Today, memo came out from the New York State Education Department that Regents exams in January of 2022 are canceled. So I sent out a note to parents, high school parents this evening, letting them know that. We don't have a large number of students taking them here at the high school, but due to COVID concerns, they felt it was necessary to cancel the Regents in January. Tomorrow morning, we have our annual spelling bee. It's being held at the middle school. The contestants will be there in person along with the judges and the facilitator, but all the students will be watching virtually, and the link is on our website if anyone would also like to watch along. The spelling bee tomorrow is a result of classroom spelling bees, so the classrooms competed, and the contestants are now at the school district level. The successful contestant will be invited to participate in the regional competition at Proctors. I believe that's in February. There are, you know, there's always potential for that to change based on what's going on with COVID, and there are some COVID protocols that the successful contestants will have to abide by. But we moved along, and we're having ours, and that's tomorrow at 8:30 at the middle school. Last Friday, everyone's aware of the kind of the national threat that was kind of facilitated through TikTok and other social media platforms. I just wanted to kind of shout out to not only the administrators, but our local law enforcement partners. I thought that, given the nature of the threat, everyone responded expediently and appropriately. We had extra police presence here at all three buildings, a collaboration between the Chatham Police, the Columbia County Sheriff, and the state police, and thankfully, nothing came of it. But you never know, in this day and age, we cannot take anything lightly. We did have received some intelligence as early of that morning that there were no really credible threats in the Columbia County, so that kind of put us a little bit at ease, but again, we don't want to take anything for granted. We did have an impact on our attendance that day. The high school experienced about 29% absenteeism, and we were at about 35%, 36% at the middle school and MED. So it had an impact. I heard some of my colleagues report as high as 50% attendance issues at some of the other regional schools. So, but we're back, and we're thankful for that. Again, the door decorating contest or effort is going on in all of our buildings. I had planned to make it, we have the middle school tomorrow, and I plan to make it down to the high school to check out all the doors, but if you would like to see the ones from MED, those are on our website, and some amazingly creative ideas, including our office, which didn't participate in the contest, but it just, as was just expressed, it just brought some nice holiday feeling to the building, and I've heard nothing but positive comments from teachers and staff and students, how wonderful it's made everyone feel. So thank you to everyone who put in some really tremendous effort and creative effort into doing this. Last check today, COVID numbers, seven-day average in Columbia County, we're at 11.5%, so still at a pretty significantly high rate. According to Jack Mab, last Wednesday, Columbia County experienced about 1,000 cases in November, and he's a bit concerned about what the upcoming holidays and New Year's will bring. So I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we continue to monitor that. It is, you know, it's a couple days before we break for the holiday, and I am pleased that we are able to report that we've kept the district open the entire time from September to December. I'm not sure. I thought that was going to be possible, but through the efforts of a lot of people involved, we have had many students quarantined and teachers pivoted to provide remote instruction to the quarantined students, but we've kept the buildings open the entire time. So thank you to everyone, including our nurses, for helping us out with that. We, again, will monitor the situation, and we'll see what the days and weeks after the holiday break will bring. And just a reminder that the district office will be closed on the following, or the next two Fridays, on the 24th and the 31st. And that's my report for this evening.
Thanks, Sal, even though I tried to skip it here. Do we have another item?
I'm sorry, you know, it's okay, yeah, so I'm sorry. I didn't make another number, but Mike wanted an opportunity just to do a quick overview of the reserve plan that you'll be approving tonight in consensus. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, but I'm going to take a second to share our screen with our viewers here so that you can see a couple slides that Mike would like to... There we go. Give me a moment just to get this positioned.
So, well, for starters, I actually want to personally thank Craig for all his commitment, time to this board. He's been there the whole time. I've been here almost 10 years. I truly appreciate everything you've done for the district, all the hours, you know, as any board member, all the hours you put in getting to know you. So I want to thank you personally for everything you've done, especially on the facilities committee, a lot of time and effort went into that for that last project. So I want to start by thanking you for that. I wish you the best. On the reserve plan, so there's a motion to adopt. We put this in place, I've been doing reserve plans, I think, 15 years I've been in school business, and I've had these for 15 years, but when the state auditor came about five or six years ago, they said, oh, you didn't formally adopt it by the board. So now we do go through the process of formally adopting this plan. We tweaked the plan and improved the plan over the years that I've been here. So our philosophy, and then I'll go through the numbers, a couple slides, but, you know, really, we're looking at long-term financial stability. It's one of the main things, you know, from my private side financial experience and background, it really has to look long-term. We're not funding a district year to year, but we're really looking for, you know, forever. So we look 10 to, really, five to 10 years out, and we're really trying to avoid drastic cuts to the education program. So we want financial resources, because really, we're here for the kids, and we also want to balance that with a stable tax levy. So those are some of the major, that's our philosophy. This is kind of the year-end results. We just finished our audit in October, so that's kind of how we do this. And we went through finance committee with this. We looked at this plan, looked at the parameters that we set. We kind of went through it in depth, but I'm just gonna give a high level here. So you can see for the year, you look at the... Let's see if the bottom, it's not quite showing, but on the very bottom, right there, look at the...
Oh, I see.
Total fund balance. So these are our reserves and savings, kind of our money to put aside for... We have multiple reserves on the left-hand side that we set up to handle difficult times and to put ourselves in good financial position. So you can see the bottom number, total fund balance, actually went up 2.357 million. We had a good year financially, in large part due to the fact that we were told that we were gonna have 20% cuts in our revenue from the state, so we were anticipating about a million-dollar cut last year. So we planned for that cut before that happened. We set a budget up to withstand that cut. We put on spending freezes and such, and then midway through the year, about, they started cutting about 20% on each of our checks, and then in January, the governor received all that money from the Fed, so we were made whole on that. So then we had, we planned for the cuts, so we had extra money, and then we lifted the freeze, but there was part of the year left, so there was spending, but not as much as normal years. And we also had COVID, so we didn't do all the extras with transportation and field trips. A lot of things got cut out. So we did put money away. You can see the increases on the right side of where we put the money. So, for example, workers' compensation, we filled up 317,000. Big pieces, our Capital III Reserve, we only put 39,000. That reserve is filled up now. We used a lot of that money on the last project, so our recommendation and finance, we're looking at a building condition survey. We're gonna have another capital project coming up soon. So our goal is to build up another capital reserve. You can see we have 3.43 million. You know, we want to be in the five or six million dollar range, so we don't have a tax pack to the taxpayers on our next one. So the good news is, on the ERS, I filled up all our reserves to the parameters, and in the ERS reserve, there's a million dollars, 1.1. That reserve is, in our parameters, is filled, so we have about a million dollars that we are going to move out of there. This is in the report. Our goal is to get it in May to have approved capital reserve, and we're gonna talk about in finance how much, you know, how many millions we want to set aside, and we're gonna move that money once that's approved for our next project. So 3.4 plus a million, we're at 4.4. We're getting closer to that five or six we're gonna need. So we're in very good position for that, for our next project, and we're sitting in strong position with our reserves. Before I go to the graphs, does anyone have any questions on the reserves or where the money's put?
Just in terms of timing on setting up a cap four, do we expect to have feedback from the building condition survey before that?
Yes. The building condition survey will be wrapping up. We're gonna go through that in depth in January. A member has to be submitted in March, so they're finishing right now. And we definitely have, we have another, you know, we're definitely looking at another project, at least similar to the one we did, you know, close to 10 million before, but we'll be going in depth through that. So as I stated, if we do a similar project, and that was kind of our planning after we did the last project, we were gonna have to do another one, you know, it'd be nice to get close to 5 million in reserve for no tax impact.
And at this moment, we're thinking three and four will get wrapped up into a project, and there's not gonna be a need for bonds right now.
Well, you still issue bonds, you know, if it's 10 million, the idea is you issue half, use the reserves, but we get 50% aid back from the state, so that's where there's no tax impact.
Okay.
So we don't have to raise taxes to do the project. That's our goal. And I stated we have 3.4, but we're gonna open another, we'll call it Capital Reserve One again. We can go back to One. And we have a million in ERS that we plan on moving already to that reserve, and then if we can fill up, you know, get some more in there. So the main thing we have to discuss in financing is kind of looking at that building condition, and what do we want that net capital reserve? It doesn't have to be for the next project. It could be for the next, you know, next 10 years out. So we might want to set a target more at four, you know, four, three, four, five million dollars. So we're gonna discuss that. Come with the recommendation in the spring for the May vote.
The increase in unemployment, that's really just a swing back because of the hit last year, right?
So the increase, so what we did since we had a strong financial year, since we didn't have those cuts, you know, that million-dollar cut, is we filled up the unemployment. You're right, we used some last year, and we filled it all back up to the parameters that fit the maximum in this.
But the...
So we used some during the year, but then we filled, we had money to fill that all the way up.
But the 630 number we're looking at is after it was depleted. Is that right?
So unemployment, you had 343,409 last year. We used about 50,000, so we went to about 290,000.
Okay.
Then we increased, we filled it to the cap, as we did with all the reserves. We kind of set the parameters, and our major goal now is to fund the capital. Like, now we're trying to fund a capital project.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
Pat, just in terms of like financial planning, anything to add before we get to that part of the season?
No, at this point, no. Really waiting to hear what the building survey.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, and then I'll do the, you know, I'll go through the graphs on the last slide. So we've kind of enhanced this over the years. So these are kind of different scenarios, worst case, base case, best case. I look at us more in the base case, and obviously, you can see in the base case in 2029, 30, right now, that's kind of if, you know, depending on what we do going forward, using up our reserves over time, how long we can last. The best case you can see goes on, and then the worst would be quickly, but it's kind of more on that yellow level. But what we actually do is, as we go up, just like we did last year when there was 20% cut in state aid, we make adjustments. So obviously, we're gonna extend that out. That yellow graph would be extended out long-term. We're not gonna be running out of money at our district. It's just when we start going down a difficult year or two, we really have to plan accordingly, looking at tax levies, make possible reductions or consolidations. So it's a combination of taxes and reserves to get us through this, but you can see we're in, you know, we're in a pretty good position. The parameters kind of for the, for example, the best case is 2% revenue on the taxes. That's kind of the 2% tax cap, you know, even though inflation's going higher, that's kind of sometimes where we're limited, set by the state. And then worst case would be 0%. If we had, you know, right now, inflation's high, but in a low inflationary year. And then health insurance and retirement rates, those are other factors, and then the big one is total expenses. On a best case, we're saying expenses go down 10%. Some of the other expenses, take out salaries and health insurance, they go down. But a normal case, we're looking at going up about 2% to 2.5% a year in expenses. So that's kind of where we show it's similar, you know, we're sitting, like I said, in good position right now, and we kind of got through last year's. We were looking at a major cut in our revenue, and that did not happen, so. Yeah, we're actually in better position now with our reserves, and like I said, now we even have the ability to fund the capital, the next capital project. So any questions on that, on this graph?
Not on this one.
Okay, so that's pretty much, and then there's a motion later to accept. Like I said, we went through this in finance, more in depth, but any questions ever on this plan, you know?
No, but just for context, basically, at this point, we have, we don't have specific plans about the capital project. It's really, we did one a few years ago. We need to check on building maintenance and see what's changed since then, what has worn since then, what the new needs are, and the whole point of the building survey was to really gather up those needs. And so we're gonna work that out over this year to come up with that, that's that plan.
That's correct.
Okay, now we're into policy committee. Pat, what's old, what's new? What do you need?
Okay, the policy committee, we met last Wednesday. And we're still waiting to hear back from legal on the three policies we sent them to review. The probability is we won't have anything out until January from now. So I can't really, you know, we don't have anything reported on that at this point in time. However, we did get, we had requested quotes from NISBA and from BOSI ZIRI on a full of policy review, manual review. We have, we got the quotes, and we reviewed them, discussed them during our meeting last week. And essentially, we decided, the consensus was to go with the lowest quote, and that, not because it was the lowest, because we thought it was really the one that really fit our needs at this point in time. Since the last review, we've been doing a concerted effort to make sure that our policies, we've tried... to make sure that our policies, we've tried to eliminate any redundant policies and consolidate as many as we can. Uh, and we've also, um, by looking at, um, the listing that NISBA provides us as to the required policies, that the education requires of us, we pretty much are in line with all of those. So, um, that, those facts and the fact that we've been kind of, in the last couple of years, kind of tending to rely more and more on, uh, NISBA, their sample policies, because we felt they were a lot more, to some extent, professional and met our needs better. Uh, and, uh, and they were also, uh, very responsive to our questions. So, um, bottom line is we went with those, that bit. And that's the one we're going to recommend to finance.
Has that been executed yet?
No, 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 we're not, we, we're just, uh, that's, so what our consensus is at the policy committee, now it goes to finance and it goes to.
So that, that's, um, that's just a, uh, next year spend, or we're going to try to move forward on that sooner than that?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, um, essentially starting next, next year.
Okay.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
At the board level here, um, I would like to review the, um, just to know what to expect, um, coming up. The defined scope of work for whatever, whatever you guys, if there's like a, if there's a synopsis, like a one pager, that'd be great.
Actually, they, they, um, I, we can make available to you the actual, uh, quote, uh, from both of them.
I don't, I don't.
The, the quote has a nice paragraph that would, I think, be a good summary.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's like a one pager.
We'll get that to you in Friday report.
Yeah.
Great.
We can do that. Debbie, can you do that? You said you sent those.
Thank you.
Uh, it's, so it's, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, uh, there were a couple of other things that we discussed. Um, Chris had, had brought up the subject of, of, uh, our policies on security. Uh, we don't have necessarily an overarching policy. We have one on the safety plan and weapons in the school and all that. So, uh, we discussed that and.
You're talking about physical security?
Overall security, overall security. And, um, so, um, we're going to reach out to this and see if they have any, what their policies are, if they have anything along those lines, before we go any further on that. Um, the other thing, um, I had brought up, I had noticed when preparing to, looking at the, the two quotes from NISBA and from BOSI's on the policy manual review, I had noticed that we, our current policy, uh, policy manual doesn't have a mission statement or a vision statement in it. And, uh, so we did, we talked about that a little bit. Uh, the mission statement, uh, that we do have is on our website, but not necessarily included in the manual at this point in time. And, uh, that was supposed to be, um, looked at back in 2018 when we were doing a review. And we did have a committee that we never really got it off the ground when it came to, uh, revisiting the mission and vision statements. So we talked a little bit about that and how we could move forward on that in this next year. Uh, so probably more to come, we probably need to put that on, maybe on the future agenda and discuss that more come the new year.
Yeah, I mean, if there's not a, I'm sort of interested in what a consultant would say about that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure, I'm sort of interested what, what, if we're going to have it reviewed, all the policies reviewed anyway, what the consultant would say about that is, in terms of guidance there, uh, because we, it's this overarching statement, right, that we have never had before, right?
Uh, we've had, no, we, we currently have a mission statement.
Oh, I thought you meant specifically to policy implementation. You're talking about an organizational mission statement?
Yes, the mission statement for, for, for the district. And a vision statement for the district. We, we did have one at one point in time that has been essentially archived some time ago, at last year when, and it's no longer current.
Okay.
So, uh, so we really need to definitely move out on that. Uh, and it's, the timing is good because if we're looking at, you know, looking at, um, capital projects and, and having some long, long, long-range planning in terms of facilities and all, it's a good time to also address the vision because they go hand in hand. And, uh, so we need to, you know, kind of think of how we're going to proceed in that respect.
Great.
It's still for thought over the holidays, let's put it that way.
I know we've done a lot of work there this year, so I'm sure it's all fresh in our heads right now, we should get it up here for. Okay, thanks, Pat. Uh, facilities?
Okay, we had a meeting yesterday, was it yesterday?
Okay, is this better?
Yes. Uh, facilities met yesterday and, uh, productive meeting. Uh, we, we began the meeting discussing sort of the initial information we gathered from SEI, the architectural firm, uh, doing the building survey report. Uh, and we quickly realized that, uh, it would be very good for us to do a walkthrough with SEI once we get more additional information from them, to walk through the facilities and get a firm grasp on, uh, the current condition. Uh, and that's going to help us narrow down and focus on, um, our efforts in this coming year and certainly in years to come. Specifically, you know, there's certain things, uh, you know, relating to parts of the, of various buildings that, um, either have been, um, uh, not addressed that we've known about for some time, that we may need to consider. Uh, or there are things that have come up in more recent times that we want to address. So more information to come as that unfolds. We don't have enough to report on that yet. We did also talk about potential program impact to the school. We did mention universal pre-K as certainly an unknown and how that potentially could impact, you know, the decision-making regarding facilities. Uh, so that could be a significant, uh, thing that needs to be looked at. So Sal had a good suggestion at the meeting, which was at the turn of the year, uh, to survey the staff, teachers, you know, to begin to listen to them, uh, in terms of, uh, looking at program needs and trying to understand if and what sort of changes we want to consider the facilities upgrades. So I guess it's something we'll be, we'll be looking at coming into the new year. And I think that's about it for now. And, you know, I think in January, we'll certainly have another report, updated report.
The only, the only footnote is, um, um, we'd also include student voice in that too, because we, we want something put from students.
Okay, thanks for this facilities update. Looking forward to the, uh, feedback from the condition survey. Okay. That's the end of committee reports. Item H, um, I'm going to read this out in brief and then I, I think we want to put some context behind it real quick. R44, be it resolved that, um, the board would like to compensate management and confidential employees in the same manner as other employees in the amount of 1% increase in their 2021 salaries. So the, can I have a motion for R44 as written?
Motion.
I have my own comment on this, um, just for some context, we did discuss this, um, in executive session. So this is a group of management and confidential employees that are not represented by a bargaining unit. As we did, they, we did work, um, and apply a 2% raise for them at the beginning of our negotiation season, which was a bit of a, um, uh, one-time eclipse where all of our contracts came up in a, in a few months and management and confidential, uh, we're, we're taken care of first in that cycle. Under the specter of, um, budgets that were going to be cut, um, additional COVID impact and cost. Um, we really did, um, manage to escape the worst financial impacts there. And as we continued through the, the, um, negotiation season, um, it seemed like, the, the management and confidential employees really did not get the same deal that, uh, some of the other groups did. Um, again, they weren't represented. So we're, we're looking to bring them in line with the rest of, uh, the Chatham staff that were represented. Sal, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of context there that I didn't cover? Because it's a confusing thing to read there, the way it's written.
No, I think you covered it, it just makes everyone whole and similar and equitable.
Okay. Um, so this, this is not, um, a large financial impact, but, um, it certainly, sends a message that we, we care about all these people and they're not being left behind because they are not represented by a bargaining unit. So, any other questions on this one? Pat?
This is for last year, not this year.
It's in effect for last school year through the end of this school year. Yes, it's for this current school year from, from beginning to end, is that right?
No, it's for the previous, the previous year, 2021.
Yes, that's what, sorry, yes, last, last fiscal year. But at the, at the original rates, at the beginning of, we wound back the clock at that point in time. So that they don't, the, the 1% accrual doesn't like stack on top of the other 2%, that makes sense.
Okay, so that, that doesn't, that's okay to go back with that, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this, this did, this did go to legal, um, and they approved this, um, the way we worded this and the way it's being executed. So I don't have any concerns about, um, about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that data is correct, okay.
Yeah, in fact, this might have even taken two trips through legal, um, but is it just one?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And we're into consensus agenda I through K. R45, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept consensus agenda I through K as written.
Second.
Um, I, I would like to make one comment, if anyone else has questions, please add them. Um, I'm really excited to see that we have these, the in-out position filled. We've appointed a, a nurse, very excited about that. Um, and we, we have some, um, we have a new AIS club, which, um, is really great. So, um, any other questions on these comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're into items for future agenda. Um, I did, um, briefly mentioned earlier that we are going to, of course, in the new year, talk about, um, what to do about a board vacancy. Um, does anyone have anything else they'd like to table for the new year that, that's not already, uh, scheduled?
I've mentioned this in, uh, previously, I think, maybe meetings back. But just, uh, going back to the topic of enrollment, uh, it's certainly something that, um, I think we should find ways to, to look at and analyze as a board. And so I'm proposing that we, you know, do a research study, uh, on declining enrollment. I know one was done, I believe, two years ago, maybe longer, maybe three years ago. I read that and I, uh, I feel like the focus of that was, it appeared to me to be more of a financial study. But I would like to consider, uh, perhaps looking at it in a different way, which is engaging community. Perhaps bringing in, uh, you know, an outside consultant to consider ways in which we can do it. So we can, we can better understand, uh, how declining enrollment, um, is impacting us and how we can find ways to attract, uh, potential students that are in the district.
So just as a point of clarification, those previous couple of reports that I've looked at, I guess I've looked at the last three. Do they have anything that can't go into the public record?
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think there isn't anything that's.
I, I wonder if it makes sense to have a little bit of a reading here at the board before we, um, run out and hire someone to just, you know, that there's cover pages on those things and they're difficult to read. And I, I've gone through them line by line and some of it's useful and some of it's not. Um, but certainly it makes sense to just look at the broad outlines, particularly as, um, nothing in that study could have predicted. They're pretty standard format, so I think what I would like to determine is, does, do we need a new study like the old studies or do we need something different? And maybe we can get all those answers here, maybe we don't need to, to hire, but, um, does anyone else feel good about that as an item to do a, a reading? What we, what we would do is maybe stick the most recent study or depending on the date of it, maybe the two most recent studies into public record. We would do, like, uh, we just look at the cover page together and just have a, a focused conversation on it. Sound good? Okay, so I'll find time the next few months.
You, um, you know, one of the things that we, uh, you may want to consider is a separate, like, work session related just to that as opposed to incorporating it in terms of a regular board meeting. Um, I do know that when we embarked on the last enrollment study, we did, Mike did a small RFP. And, um, there are a few, there are a few companies, um, in the state that do provide, provide that service. Some are more regional-based and won't come, don't, don't operate in this area. And a couple, I believe, that did respond, um, I think one on Long Island as well. But I think we also would, at some point, if that's the direction you'd like to go in, do solicit some quotations, because it may be a, it may be a, um, last time I think we paid for it through a finance initiative, um, as well, so.
I, you know, I spent a lot of time on those reports, maybe, I, I'm not going to say more than other board members, but it was, it was several hours over the last few years, because I keep going back to them. There's a lot of questions I have related to enrollment that those reports don't answer. Just because of the nature of their studies. You know, they're looking at a lot of, they're comparing to a lot of nationally available statistics. And I think that they don't do a great job of representing the, uh, what's different about this part of the country. Things like, well, we're within, we're within commute range of New York, right? Things like, um, the, uh, the demography here. I think they're looking at census data, and I know that the last time we, we went through that cycle, it was 10-year-old census data. So, um, but I'm, I'm not sure that another study like that would be what I would want to see. So I think we could do a work session, but I'd like to have a list of questions that we're going to have someone answer and not have them do their idea of a enrollment study. I think it could be a long conversation, so does anyone, how does anyone feel about splitting that out into a work session? Can certainly do a special, um, workshop for that, but it would be an extra meeting on the calendar. Okay. Sal, we may need to find a volunteer from your team to, um, be knowledgeable of those reports, to facilitate that discussion. So you want to figure that out and we can schedule?
Are you saying that the board member has a specific question?
Yes, I, I don't want to do another RFP without my questions getting answered. Because I had questions last time and then we waited, did a report, got the new report, question still not answered, so. Yeah, like a, like a really big one is, how does our enrollment compare to the private school enrollment around here? And there's. And there's, it's an 80-page report or something like that, and there's not one sentence that talks about that. Um, all right, didn't mean to go so far off track there, but.
And, and just so, um, there's some comments in the chat and just so that we're clear to those who are viewing at home, that we're, we're talking about fully public meetings and fully public discussions.
Yes.
Right, there, we don't want to imply that these are conversations are happening behind closed doors, that this would be a fully public dialogue.
Yeah, it's really just, um, if we're going to spend an hour and a half on it, it would, um, we would probably want to make a dedicated day for it and it would have to be a new meeting because all the old meetings are full. Um, all right, so we're back to our second public comment. Um, the intent for this is to, um, give a chance for district stakeholders to again, um, speak about issues that relate to today's agenda. Um, not just any issue. Um, so if we have any digital hands, we can give them each a minute, um, if they have any, any comment. It looks like we got more participants than we had at the beginning, so.
Yeah, we have 10 now, but we had 11 at one point.
Okay. No digital hands, I can't see from here, okay. So, um, there is a need for a brief executive session to discuss, um, specific, um, matters that relate to a specific individual. So, um, be it resolved that the Board of Education enter to executive session. Um, can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, and can I have a motion to appoint Salvador D'Angelo as district clerk pro tem for the executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, and we do not anticipate returning to open session, so this is the, uh, the conclusion of the open session. All right.